It is 7:22. Would you please rise for the July meeting of the Village Committee Board of Trustees? Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
Thank you very much. There are no items on the agenda this evening with regards to adoption of legislation and/or appointments. That being said, I'm going to turn the meeting over to the clerk for clerk's report.
Yes, clerk's office sold 700 trash bags this month. We attended one planning meeting, one planning workshop. There were materials and we have yours. July 26th, Saturday, July 26th at 9:00 a.m.
Thank you very much. Treasures report.
The general fund, there was $50,624.94. And the water fund, $4,035.01. And the silver fund, we had $2,086.50. For a total of $56,746.46.
I would bring the board's attention to an issue we just discussed in my office. In the workshop, there is a bill to D.J. Vosberg for $5,200. That is for road repair on Clay Hill Road following the heavy rains that the village saw about three weeks ago. The good thing about that is that those funds are reimbursable through New York State CHIPS program, which is Community Highways Improvement Programs. That being said, at this point, I entertain a motion to accept the treasures report.
So moved.
Motion has been made by trustee Schneider and seconded by the deputy mayor. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Post. Motion carries. You've had an opportunity to see the treasures report with regards to the payments that are being paid out this month. So at this point, I approve a motion to pay the bills for the month.
So moved.
Motion has been made by the deputy mayor. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion has been made in second. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Post. Motion carries. Trustee Israedi for the purpose of his zoning report.
I'm just forgetting to read this. Seems like I see really little information.
No, but thank you. My bad. Sorry.
Several building permits have been issued for a total revenue of $200 to the village. In addition to that, there have been a number of inspections, all of which passed by the zoning officer. That was eight of them. I'm sorry, there were three building permits for 250 total events. There was a complaint by one property owner on Montgomery Street that her neighbor had dug a ditch to divert water onto her property. I believe that's an ongoing issue.
One move.
The zoning officer sent out two, I think, repeat letters for people who had not brought in their garbage containers. That is an effort that we're undertaking to just remind people that we are, we like to keep the village tidy. And so it's been a targeted effort on the part of the zoning officer. And another resident had two cars that were removed from the property. They appeared to be abandoned. And there's an effort to clean up that property. And there are several other permits that have been closed down. That's really significant.
Thank you. I want to go back a little bit. You've had an opportunity to review the minutes from the June Board of Trustees meeting. At this point, I entertain a motion to approve the minutes as submitted. Motion has been made by trustee Schneider. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion has been made in second. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Post. Motion carries. I'm not aware of any correspondence this month. At this point, I turn the floor over for committee reports. Deputy Mayor Griffin?
Thank you. I'll start with the water report for the month of June 2014. As every month, there are two microbiological samples taken at various points throughout the water system to test for things we don't want there. And I'm pleased to say that once again, there are no microbiological violations. And that in the month of June, there were no water breaks or other things affecting the water system. We did have a small break on Woods Road last night, but that will show up in the July report. And it's already been fixed. I was going to second clerk Gennella. Yard sale day, the 26th of July. Hopefully, it won't rain. With the help of trustee Bruno, I've been working for several, I guess, into the months now on an inventory of the signs around the village. We lost some to snowplows over the winters. We've lost some to vandals at other months. And we went around the whole village. We looked at every sign, every sign post to figure out, you know, what needs to get done. There was a significant amount, so we sort of divided it into phases. And phase one is complete. Phase one is sort of, if your street didn't have a sign on it, so when your relatives come to visit, they can't even find your house. Those signs are up. And the welcome to the village of Tivoli signs, we had had one stolen on Woods Road. And now there's one coming in on North Road and Montgomery Street. Those are all replaced. So phase two is going to be existing signs that are still there, but they could be straightened or touched up, or the stickers can be rubbed off and that kind of stuff. So first things first, but thanks for your help on that. And we're making some progress. The bike racks should be going in Memorial Park. These were through a county program. We have four bike racks that are going to accommodate a total of eight bikes. And they'll go right as you enter Memorial Park. And they can service the whole park as well as the bus stop. Because since that's been on Pine Street, I've seen some bikes locked up to trees and whatnot. So, but they're actually quite handsome looking. And the Green Committee, I want to remind folks, meets on the second Tuesday, excuse me, third Tuesday of the month at 5:30. We've had some new members show up, some new projects, but we're always looking for new members. So that's the Green Committee. And the community garden is having a picnic August 9th in the evening. And if you haven't visited the garden, stop by and see how it looks. This rain's been bad for a lot of things, but it's been pretty good for the garden. So, thank you.
The same program that funded the bus shelter funded the bike racks through Dutchess County Department of Transportation. So we're grateful to the county for that. They've been good to work with that. Bus stop and the bike racks didn't cost a village one red cent, so we're...
Let's see what else they have.
We'll keep digging. We'll keep digging. Trustee Israedi?
Well, I was invited to and able to attend the Art Smith Hudson Grant Awards Ceremony in July, in June. And I was very pleased to see that there, two of the 11 grants awarded in Dutchess County went to Tivoli agencies. The Tangents Art Theater received one of those grants. And our street painting festival received a grant again this year. And Mr. Mayor, I'd like to present you a check for $725.
It's made out to the village, though.
[laughter]
I got really excited. I'm sorry. Thank you. You know, this shows the dedication of your committee every year, that we continue to receive this grant. So kudos to you and your street painting committee.
They do like us because we get a lot done for a long amount of money. So we make them proud. And just to let you know that not only do we make them proud, but we make the Ulster County State Center John J. Bonnetrick proud. And he's given us a award as certificate of merit. And Senator Terry Gibson has also given us a certificate of merit. Sir, here's some room.
We'll get those up around the village hall. Very nice.
It was great fun. It was, it's always a good, a feel-good kind of event. And they're, they're really moving forward. They're now called Art Smith Hudson because they've combined Ulster and Dutchess into one decentralization program. And it's nice. You get good synergies. I also would like to say that our, to report on the investment return for the Lozep program, that's our linked-up service award program for the fire department. The World Bank Canada Wealth Management Group, who manages that portfolio, which is now close to $95,000, that's serious money for our 21, or 21, I think it was this year, has been very concerned about rising interest rates. They've been scathing out of, trying to protect against interest rate rise. And if any of you follow the markets, all you know that interest rates haven't been moving up at all. So let's kind of treat their performance. But they have, over the last year, or three, for the last 12 months, earned about 6% in the portfolio, which was our long-term target for annual returns. And actually, since the program started, the return is about 8.04. So they've done a good job for us. We did a good job because we started it right after the market crash. Something that's been going up was just always, I've always known about investing. It's much better off being lucky than smart. But I think we've been a little of both in that program. And the planning board has been very busy of late. I believe trustee Bruno had some experience with them earlier this month.
I did.
With regard to putting the skate park into Memorial Park, it was a very lively session. I was unfortunately unable to attend. But I got really good minutes from our planning board secretary. And it was, as these things should be, well-attended by those, both constituents of escape ramp in the park and citizens who were concerned about noise and other problems that such a park might generate. So that's the purpose of doing these hearings. And unfortunately, the planning board has to weigh that out and figure out what the right thing is to do. And they work hard at this.
Do we know when they'll make a decision?
I believe it's on the 28th of July. Am I correct?
I believe.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you. Trustee Bruno?
Okay. As I usually start with, and being that we've just sort of leaned right into the park, I will just make a note for, for parents that the rec program is still, is still running. It will go through Friday, July 25th. It runs 9 to 12 in the park. And working with the library, participants can be walked over to the library for the lunch bunch from 12 to 2. That will run through Friday, August 1st. They're extending that for one more week further beyond the recreation program. And working with the library, they still have so many other programs that are available. But also, not to forget, Friday, August 15th, 9:00 p.m. in the park, the family stargazing night. I think that's really going to be a wonderful opportunity for families to be together and kind of just look up and gaze into the stars. In the park, the two very small pieces of equipment were installed. And the juvenile handicap swing has been delivered. And I spoke with Mr. Simmons this morning. That will go up soon. And we're awaiting delivery of the adult handicap swing. Once we receive that, that too will be installed.
It's been ordered, though.
Oh, yes. Yes, we're just waiting, waiting for the freight company to call and give us a date that they will, that they will bring it here. And then we'll assist in getting it off the truck. One other, just sort of community program, and something that you might want to call for, is Saturday, August 2nd, our Tivoli Fire Department having the chicken barbecue. Rounds will open at 1:00. Chicken will be served at 3:00. And if you'd like tickets, you can call Ralph at 757-2431.
Or see any member.
Pardon me?
Or see any member.
Is that it?
That's it.
Trustee Schneider?
I am going to start off with the village court charge volume summary report for the month of June. Total charges received were zero. Total charges disposed were 16. A total of $1,602 was collected and remitted to the state comptroller. On other lines of business, a letter has been issued to Tivoli business owners inviting them to a forum with Mayor Penna and myself that will be held next Tuesday, July 22nd, at 6:00 p.m. in the mayor's office. I'm looking forward to meeting with the business owners. In the past, Tivoli has had a business alliance that is no longer currently in force, but we are looking forward to hearing from business owners to find some ways to cross-promote businesses and increase the traffic for our community here. Any concerns or grievances that business owners have can also be brought to this meeting. We're more than welcome to do some problem solving and work on any issues of a negative nature. This morning, I was able to attend our shared services committee meeting. It was held at the town hall, excuse me, the village hall in Red Hook. The consultants that we hired, Fairweather Consulting and Ron Hout Consulting, were both there, along with representatives, of course, from the village and town of Red Hook, and then myself from the village of Tivoli. We got a, just an status update on the progress of the feasibility study. There's been a little bit of a delay in regard to data that's needed to do basically a current status or analysis. And so that, of course, prompted an initial recommendation to reevaluate our data collection processes. You know, there's a balance between having employees report on every single thing that they're doing versus having the data available for such a study as what we're undertaking. What we also discussed were areas where centralization could be implemented. One of the very specific examples that came up was a software program that the town of Red Hook is currently looking at, which would allow them to track activities, costs, vehicle costs associated with highway services. So the discussion this morning did include ways that that could be extended to both the villages. There is a recognition there as well, that the study has to look at different, there's not, it's not an apples-to-apples comparison, because village DPWs or a village highway department is, doesn't serve the same function as the town highway department. So that's being taken into consideration as well. All of the information that we needed to cover, we actually were not able to cover in our two-hour meeting this morning. So an additional meeting has been set for the 25th, which is next Friday, at 10:00 a.m. And that will take place at the Red Hook Town Hall. All of the meetings are open to the public. There's not an opportunity for public input at these meetings, but you are free to attend and observe. There is a public meeting that has been scheduled for July 30th, which is a Wednesday evening at 7:00 p.m. And that is also at the town hall. Are you sure?
I thought there was one on the 23rd.
There was one that was originally scheduled for the 23rd. Yes, they have changed that and pushed that out a week. As I said, one of the challenges that the consultants bumped into in the initial phase was that data that they needed from each municipality to begin that current status analysis. Some of that was a challenge to locate. And so it put that particular task on a slight delay. They want to have all of their ducks in a row in order to be able to present and to answer questions thoroughly at the public meeting. So we have looked at pushing that out a week to the 30th. Okay?
And that was at the town?
That was in the village.
It was scheduled in the village. I apologize. The location is the same. It is at the village.
Is that the village hall?
Yes, it is. I've got, both my notes here together. What we also discussed was, you know, one of the things that we keep reiterating is that there's no set agenda for this feasibility study. And so one of the topics of conversation this morning was perhaps there's a hybrid solution lurking here because it's not an apples-to-apples kind of comparison. It may need to be sort of a pilot solution, which would take elements of consolidation along with elements of shared services to address the concerns and create those efficiencies between the three municipalities. So I think that the majority of the participants in the steering committee were open to all manner of opportunities that are available. But general consensus is that may be the way that we go, you know, with a hybrid solution and not consolidation or strictly shared services through IMAs.
Is there, excuse me, is there a, there's a website where the meetings are posted? I mean, just the locations move around, which is a great thing, but I'm just...
They do, right. We want to make sure that...
So where can people, do you happen to have that in front of you?
It's on our webpage. You can click on our, go to our webpage, click on the link, and it'll tell you prior meetings, where the next meeting is, what the next step in phase is. So it is on our webpage.
Technically, the town has a calendar for their events, too.
They do.
Yes.
The agendas and the documentation for a lot of the study is also available on that link. Residents are welcome to give their feedback through that link as well. So I encourage anyone who has concerns or questions to go ahead and take a look at that through the village website so that they can get a better idea of where the study is at, if they have any other questions or concerns.
I was just going to piggyback on something you were saying about no set agenda. There was, a few weeks ago, the board approved an application to the Dutchess County Department of Planning with regards to deciding whether or not we, as a village, want to transfer our water sewer system over to the Dutchess County Water and Wastewater Authority. I want to reiterate, this is only a study at this point. If we're to get this grant, this is simply a study. There's no determination. If we receive this grant, there's no determination going into this, into this review. And I know there's, there's some comments made that, well, automatically if we bring in Dutchess County, that our rates are going to raise, are going to rise because Town of Hyde Park did it and their rates rose. Apples to oranges, it's the same thing. You can't compare our water sewer system to the Town of Hyde Park's water sewer system because it's a completely different system. The Town of Hyde Park's rates rose because when the water authority went in, they did a review of the current infrastructure and the water sewer system of Town of Hyde Park and realized we need to do A, B, and C to get this system up and running. And that's why those rates rose. The water authority may come in here if we were to transfer over, and they may say, okay, your rates can stay the same. We don't need to raise your rates because your rates are stable where they are. It's going to depend on what the water authority determines when, when they come in. But I want to reiterate, this is only, this would only be, if we received this grant, a study at this point. The engineering firm would come in, they would make a recommendation to the board. They would say, yes, we think it's in the best interest of the village to transfer. Or no, they don't. We're going to take the recommendation. We're going to review it. Then this board as a body will make the determination of whether or not we're going to transfer. So there's no set agenda with regards to the water authority review, as there's no set agenda with regards to the highway services. It's very well possible that the town of Hyde, the town of Red Hook and the village of Red Hook may say, we want to consolidate. And we, as a village government, may say that, no, we don't want to consolidate. So the engineers will make that determination. We'll look at it. We're going to hold public hearings on both projects. And we'll make a determination, make a determination from there. But I know there's been some concern as to whether or not Tivoli's rates would raise. My opinion and my point is that let's wait to see what the review has to say. Then let's start making, we can make comments based on what the review has. So. I wanted to talk about the state of emergency that I declared a few weeks ago. The village of Tivoli received 4.8 inches of rain in only a few hours. The Department of Emergency Response said to me, three inches of rain is bad. 4.8 is really, really bad. The village saw significant flooding when that rain took place, which caused me to declare a state of emergency. We had on Clay Hill Road, which we just repaired about nine months ago, we had four feet wide and about 25 feet long damage. Parts of that road were washed out. We had significant damage along Friendship Street. We had significant damage along Broadway, which is a county route here. We've, we've repaired Clay Hill when we need to repair our friendship. We're waiting for the county to come in and do their repairs. We talked about in the beginning of the meeting, the repairs to Clay Hill came in at $5,200. That fortunately is reimbursable through our CHIPS program. We don't yet have a number on Friendship. And we don't know what the repairs here will cost the county on Broadway. But I want to thank once again our Tivoli Fire Department for the assistance they gave. When I was declaring that state of emergency, they were actually out at a structure fire in Rhinebeck, right? We're back up to Fire Department Rhinebeck. They got done the structure fire, came back and started pumping out some homes in Tivoli. You were at my house at about 1:30 in the morning, I think, pumping me out. So my sincere thanks to Tommy Christie, to the chief, and to the entire department that night. Also want to thank Senator Terry Gibson. The day after we had the heavy rains, the senator contacted me. And basically, whatever we can do, let us know. I'm actually going to tour the village with the senator next week. We're going to look to see what resources and grant, within state funding and grants might be available to the village with regards to repairs, with regards to drainage. So I really want to thank Senator Gibson for his assistance. He contacted me right away. And really appreciate that phone call, Senator. So if you're listening, I know you're a Panda viewer. I appreciate, appreciate the opportunity you had to meet with me. The next board meeting will be held on August 20th, 7:00 here at Village Hall. There'll be a workshop prior at 6:00. The regular workshop will be August 13th at 6:00. If there's nothing further, I would turn it over to these nice, patient young ladies who were here early to talk to the board. So ladies, I'll turn the floor over to you, and then we'll hear from Tommy Christie.
Now you have a concern?
Oh, yeah. What is our emergency plan in case of tornado?
In case of a tornado?
Yeah.
We are actually, well, in case of a tornado, in case of a hurricane, in case of flooding, we, before that takes place, before that incident actually takes place, there is conversations between Dutchess County Emergency Response, myself, and the Department of Public Works. There's comment, and there's discussions with the fire department and rescue squad. A few years ago, when we had the hurricanes, we started these conversations early in advance because we knew that it was going to be bad. So our first thing is to get the alerts that they're, that they're actually coming. And then we start immediate conversation with those parties, as well as Central Hudson, the town of Red Hook, the village of Red Hook. With regards to a tornado, we would follow the directives that are issued by Dutchess County Emergency Response, as well as the National Weather Service. And we would start putting out information as soon as we got it. We managed two hurricanes and an earthquake last year and the following year, or 2011, I'm sorry, 2012. We managed to get through those storms. Okay. And we managed to get this, through this last storm, okay, without a lot of damage. And thankfully, no one, no one was hurt. But we would follow the directives of the fire department. If need be, we would open up an emergency shelter at the firehouse if we need to. The reason that we don't do around the clock is because, number one, our firemen need to sleep, and we need generators to keep certain equipment up and running. I need access to a computer. The fire department needs certain access to generators with regards to equipment. So we have a plan that we're actually working with the town of Red Hook and the village of Red Hook in concert with Dutchess County Emergency Response. The town of Red Hook has actually been complimented by Emergency Response for their plan of action. And we're actually starting to piggyback on their plan and starting to take bits and pieces from them. With regards to tornadoes or hurricanes or flooding, there's nothing specific. It's sort of, if, if the emergency takes place, we sort of, as a government, know what, what we're going to do in concert with DPW and the fire department. I would assume, and again, this is just an assumption, that where you live over at the condos, that there's probably some... that there's probably some sort of directives that are given by management with regards to flooding or storm.
I'm on board.
Okay.
And one of the questions that I've had several new owners ask me is, in the event, and this has been a situation to a concern, rightfully so, because we'll fall down like a box of bansheers. In that event, if we needed to evacuate, let's just say your sirens go off because it's imminent and there's a tornado. Where do we go? There may be a wonderful evacuation plan and a preparedness for the Town of Red Hook. Where would anyone in this area?
Right.
90% of the units of the homeowners here, or at least 75 to 80%, don't even have basements. So where would the Village of Tivoli, because that's our concern?
Right.
Where would we go? Are there designated areas, for instance, St. Sylvia's Church, St. Paul's Church, the town hall here? To designate those areas that people say, well, if you live in this quadrant, this is where you're going to go. Do we have anything like that? Do I actually have people asking me this?
Yeah. In the event of an emergency, I would be in concert with the town supervisors. We're part of the town. I would be in contact with the supervisor of the town, the superintendent of the Red Hook School District, as well as Bard College personnel. There are structures here, however, we would make that determination based on conversations with emergency management. Where is the best location for individuals to go? If there was an emergency such as you just spoke, we would make sure that your location is off Provost Park. And probably the schoolhouse would be made aware of where we would determine in concert with all of those other agencies and parties, where the best location it would be. To pick a location right now, determine we're going to go here, I can't make that determination because I don't know what other locations are going to be.
No, right, I mean, you cannot make that determination tonight.
But we do have a, right.
But I do feel that, I think the people in the area need to say, they should have a preparedness, even a little flyer that says, if this happens and I live here, this is where I need to go, or this is where I can go. Nobody seems to know what they would do away from that.
We've done pretty well in terms of when we had significant flooding a few years ago before I was mayor. This is actually during former Mayor Molinaro's tenure. We, there was really bad storms. Tommy, you probably can back me up on this. We go around notifying Provost, we went around to the condos on a fire truck with a PA. We go knocking on doors in concert with state police, the sheriff's office at that time, probably village police, notifying individuals where a safe structure would be. So we would make the determination based on the scenario at that particular time, where would be the safest place. But this is actually something that we, we talked about when we were down at emergency management.
Just going to add.
Yeah, go ahead.
A month ago.
Yeah, we're there a month ago.
The mayor and I had an opportunity to tour the Dutchess County Emergency Response Command Center and it was amazing. And actually, I was quite comforted by the level of sophistication in their procedures, equipment. I mean, these people are ready to take care of us. That was kind of amazing. I also heard that the Town of Red Hook is, is one of the models for other communities. And I also learned that the Village of Tivoli has, has some work to do to get prepared. But one thing they explained is that, I think with Irene, they were probably say eight or 10 days out. You know, they have weather systems and they're tracking these things. And when they, when models indicate there's a problem coming, I mean, they really get a big head start on it, at which point they would be notifying the municipalities throughout the county of, you know, what to expect and, and what to get ready for. So, you know, I think it's a, it's a process. There's some things that should happen. I think your suggestion is possibly a very good one.
Yeah, I feel that.
But, but we, we actually just, you know, we're all living with these dramatic storms and hearing what's happening elsewhere in the state. And so we made sure to get down there to this command center and start educating ourselves, really.
But, you know, we, the first hurricane that we had, I can't remember if it was Irene or Sandy, I forgot. Sandy. When we knew days in advance, you know, what was, what was expected. And, you know, some of my first phone calls were to my predecessors who said, we didn't have to deal with hurricanes. However, they gave me some really good suggestions. I met with our public works department, I met with Bard College, I met with the Fire Department, the town and the village. So we got through that storm, I think because we were prepared. We had enough oil and enough gasoline. The Fire Department's had what they need. And I basically, you know, they have carte blanche, whatever your departments need to be prepared, we were prepared. Unfortunately, we got through that storm pretty well. And we had quite a bit of rain dur, during that storm. And not as much, we didn't have as much rain then as we did three weeks ago. We had more rain three weeks ago than we had. But I will assure you that if a tornado is predicted, that those conversations start a few days in advance.
Well, you know, sometimes a tornado is not.
Well, that's true too, that's true too. However, however, if something were to come up out of the blue, if a storm were to come up out of the blue, we would make sure that certain areas that don't have those basements and net, or instructions like that, like Provost and the condos and the schoolhouse, we would make sure that personnel is there to assist and do whatever we need to do to ensure someone's safety. In concert with, with Bard and Red Hook School District, Town of Red Hook as, as well.
Right, I mean, we just felt, and as I said, this is, it's just ironic that it became a conversation. And people are bringing it to me because I'm on the board.
Sure.
What do we do?
Yeah.
And it just seemed to me a very, well, I thought this was a very good question because we don't have designated sites. But I could say, don't worry about it. If that went to happen, just as an example, St. Paul's Church knows they're a designated site for us and it's going to be open.
I'm going to have the captain of the fire police.
Lieutenant.
Coming. Lieutenant, I'm sorry.
Here, here's what goes on when there's an emergency, when 911 gets the call from National Weather Service. We know about it before you guys even know about it. They, they alert us out and tell us to go on standby in the Fire Departments for possible storm damage and whatever's coming. And that's what we do. We're on alert once we, I can't tell you how many times my phone has gone off in the last three days for, to, to respond down to the firehouse. That's basically what they do. As far as like Brian says, telling people where they can go, it's hard. I mean, we don't have a siren anymore. I mean, so that's, there's no way of alerting anybody with a siren.
Right.
That, that's gone. You have to go, like Brian said, we've done before, go around with fire trucks and, and make the note, you know, tell you what's going on, where to go, what to do. And that's basically what you, what you really can do. I mean, it's hard, these storms pop up like instantly. Like I said, I told you this before, Woods Road, in case you guys aren't aware of it. The other day, tree fell on a house. It went right through the, right through the roof. I have pictures for you and stuff if you'd like to see it, but.
We thought you were pulling your mind.
That came right up over the, right up over the ridge and, you know, and there was a lot of damage to that, to that home. They do happen. Woods Road is terrible for, for trees. I mean, we've learned that in Sandy and when that came through here.
That's when we pulled everybody off, remember that night?
They had tons of trees come down. We were down there, we were cutting a tree out of the road and a tree fell right behind the fire truck. And that's when we called everybody out of there. Nobody was allowed to go back up there. Those, those things happen. You don't know which tree is going to fall or who's, you know. But we're alerted, just so that you're at ease, we're alerted as soon as the National Weather Service says there's something going on. And they normally follow that radar way out, and so does there are some of us that follow the radar too. Then we, we're.
I have a question for you, Tommy. How long have you been on the Fire Department?
Thirty-five years.
How many tornadoes have you dealt?
Tornadoes? Well, they'll call them straight line winds.
Okay, so you've had those.
Yeah, we've had, we've had straight line winds come through before. We have hurricane winds come through before.
How much warning do you have for a straight line wind?
They'll tell you that there's a severe thunderstorm coming. No, it's not zero. It's usually, like I said, the, the National Weather Service will say, this storm has a, if you read the radars, there's like, they call bow echoes. When you see a bow echo in, in, in the radar, that means wherever that bend is, there's high winds and possible damage coming through. And they pick those things up, they can pick them up across the river somewhere. There is time.
Would it be helpful for the Fire Department to have designated here buildings which have, are more capable of protecting people?
I, I like, I like that idea about going into a, a sub-basement, you know, if, if we do. Because like I said, the weather patterns here have been changing. I mean, it's new, there's been a lot of storms here lately that, that's whipped up these EF1 tornadoes or zero tornadoes. And they do damage. It would make sense to have dedicated buildings in, in certain places where people want to go. But the thing I, I see happening is that everybody gets in their cars and they all run to that spot. And then, then when we have to get in there, there's cars all over the place.
I think, Brad, this is.
I just don't know how you would do it.
This is a good discussion and we ought to follow up with the task force.
Yeah, I'm going to, I'm going to bring it up to the, when I go to that meeting in Red Hook for, I have the disaster preparedness board there. And I'm going to, I'll, I'll talk to them about that and see.
Yeah, we came away from our, from our field trip to the, to the county command center with some, with some resources, with some blueprints, with state literature that helps municipalities create preparedness plans.
Yeah, I think people just need to be educated, what they would do, maybe would go.
Absolutely.
What's the protocol? No one seems to know what, what the protocol.
Because there isn't necessarily a designated protocol aside from notifying residents when that alert is issued and then determining at that time of the emergency where the safest location is.
And, you know, like I say, it all depends on time wise now, you know, like going around talking on fire trucks, you know. You really don't have that time to do it because we're getting prepared for something else. It was nice when we used to have our siren. We don't have it anymore.
But if you knew, for example, that church right there, I mean, would it have its doors open? Right, but what I know of, of Tivoli, we have some structures here that would be, what I would consider safe structures. You know, St. Sylvia's, St. Paul's, this building.
But you'd have to clear it with these places because they're just not going to let you go in your building.
Oh, no, of course not, no. They would have to fall in line and be part of.
Thank you so much for bringing this to our table.
You're welcome. My one of, my one of the concern when I came here is, I know you're talking about the outsourcing of the water. The copy of the last water report, we, we get copies of those?
We put an annual report out once a year.
It's on the website.
And, yeah, we put, that report is distributed.
Are you asking about the water sewer budget? No, actually, on the quality of the water. And the reason I ask is, there are times I am low end of the kitchen, it's so super chlorated. And I have filter on my water in the condo in my unit. I mean, I have a, they do have water softens and everything, it works so hard. And, and I've had a water source company who installed it said to me, you, you have a unit turning on chlorate. And yet when they came, it was like, wow, you must have been, are you super chlorinating? Because I have to tell you.
There are times where, well, I will tell you, there are certain times with regards to whether there's storms, if there's a break or a leak, that the superintendent who daily is responsible. I thought I smelled smoke speaking of something, I'm sorry. There are times where the superintendent does need to add certain things to the water based on the readings that he finds. But he's not adding anything that's unsafe based on what we're showing. But, yeah, there are times where certain things have to be added to the water in order to make it.
Well, at those times, I wouldn't, is the water safe to drink? I mean, I have to be honest, I fill up a glass of water and I taste it, I'm tasting chlorine. It's not something I want to drink. And if, if consolidated with our water and outsourcing is going to raise, is going to have an ex compensation. It's going to increase our rates. I'm all for it because what I'm spending on bottom water, I would probably save, save money when you outsource the water. Because we want water.
We won't outsource the water, the water has.
Well, you know what I mean, the, the.
Yeah, the administration of the.
Exactly. What I'm spending on bottom water, the rates will probably be less and safer.
Your concern is with the quality of the water?
Absolutely, yes.
Well, we're on quality of water.
Hold on, because I'm saving you. Did you have anything else?
No, not at all.
You, you came to my meeting and you want to chat with me?
Not this time.
Tommy Christie.
Brian, quality of water. See that brown stuff floating on the bottom of that water? That's not acceptable. I don't know what, what they're doing to test, but they ain't doing it on my screen. It's all the time. This morning, now this is from a couple of days ago, this morning, I'll show you the pictures of the water that was coming out of my bathroom sink when I went to brush my teeth. I, I will not drink this water for any, I don't know what's in it. I don't know what the Department of Health will say it's in it, but it's all the time. I mean, and you know, you flush the height, the lines, and I understand there's been storms and everything else, but that, that ain't acceptable. I mean, you could see that stuff floating on the bottom. If anybody wants to take a Google, you can, I got it here. We got to do something with that. Gotcha. I mean, it's not the first time I've been here about that. It's, it's, it's a lot of times. And my neighbors all say the same thing, that brown stuff is coming in, so it ain't nobody's pipes or whatever. It's whatever's stirring it up is come floating, it comes floating in all the time. So today I'll show you the pictures, later I just don't want to.
No, I, I.
The next issue, we'll get off of that. We'll go to the Fire Department issues. I got some problems with that. Last year, you guys allotted us $25,000, $30,000 to do interior building, interior exterior building maintenance on the firehouse. This year, we're down, we've been cut back to $5,000. We, what do you call, you've talked to Ralphie, Ralphie's went out, he just went and talked to the person that we had that was going to do the gutters on the, on the outside of the firehouse. Because as you saw, they fell, the downspouts fell off and everything else. That went from 30, 30 something hundred dollars to $8,000 just to replace that. That's what happens when we wait. There was a two-year wait involved there. The price went up to $8,000 and of course now they had the material to do it and now they have to go out and buy the material to do it. So now we're looking at $8,000 just for that. We know now, the last couple of storms, we've had leaks in the roof. Water comes into the bay, comes into the back room, the furnace room. We, that's been happening, the back room has been happening since Sandy, I believe it was. Okay? That still hasn't, never been taken care of. We've been wanting the outside of the building to be painted. There hasn't been a drop of paint went on the outside of that building in almost 30 years. And this is, is starting to show its, its age, it's wearing down. And, and we can't do it with $5,000. It's got to be brought back up. I don't know where that money went to. We never got to spend that money last year. They, you guys stopped us and, and was allocated to us and now you took it away. This year, you gave us $5,000. I, I know Ralphie came up and spoke with you, but Ralphie's a little teddy bear.
Well, let's not talk about Ralphie, he's not here.
I'm, I'm just saying, I, I need to see that money put back there. It has to be put back there. Because that building needs to be taken care of. You talk about a place for people to go in case of an emergency and stuff. If the building's in bad shape, we ain't going to put people in a building that's got water leaks. That's, that's the bottom line. You know, we got computers in there, we got all kinds of stuff. You know what's in that, in that place, that building. And we, and we put a lot of pride into that building. And we don't want to see it go, go to waste. And, and unfortunately, when you take away a big chunk of money like that, what, how are we supposed to do this with $5,000? We got lights on the outside that don't work. They don't, and, and we, we go in there to a fire call, try to get in, it's, it's like midnight, you can't even find your way in there. You know, it's, it's, it's not right, it shouldn't be that way. And what I'm asking is somewhere, somehow, you guys need to find some money and put it back in. That building needs to be taken care of this year, has to be taken care of this year. I mean, I, I don't know how you're going to do it or what you're going to do, but, you know, we do a lot. Our, our services are free to the village and the whole nine yards. I just think that we're looking at protecting a, a very important asset to the village and, and, and we need that money put back there. It has to be. I, you know, I, I don't want to go much further than that, but, but you know, I told you about that the night of the storm. I said, you know the roof was leaking, I told you that that night. We got to get it fixed. It can't be, can't be that way. Ralphie told me $5,000, I almost fell off the chair. I said, what are you going to do with $5,000?
I don't have the budget in front of me right now. I don't know specifically, Susan, you, how much is allocated?
I have some ideas that I think that should meet discussing.
With regard, I don't know what was allocated towards the Fire Department right now off the top of my head. I don't know.
I know, every time, sorry, every time we, we wait another year, we're talking bukum dollars on, on the top of it. You know, and, and it's, you know, it can't be kept putting off all the time. Look, two years, a year and a half, two years. And we had all the three bids and everything else to go last year till we got frozen. And that would have been.
You weren't the only person that got frozen, Tommy. The entire village.
Well, I'm, I'm just saying, that, that, that thing was something that had to get taken care of. I know things came up and stuff, but still, that needed to take, taken care of. Now we're up to $8,000 just to do gutters. We could have been $5,000 ahead and got other things done, but that ain't going to happen.
With regards to finding money?
There are grants out there, I don't know why you guys don't, won't apply for some.
Tommy, I can't, we have secured probably, since I've been mayor, we've probably secured, I know we've secured at least 200,000, over $200,000 in grant funding. So it's not like this village is not applying for grants.
No, no, no.
Okay. But we're, this village is applying for grants all the time. Two, over $200,000 in three years that we've got. With regards to finding money in the budget, I don't know where more money's going to come from in this budget. This budget, the budget that was presented, the budget that was adopted, we're down significantly. So where this board is going to find more funding in a. is going to find more funding in, in, in a budget, the board will have to take that under advisement and, and.
Well, they.
And come up with a plan of action.
Okay. I'll, I'll talk to you offline. I'll tell you where you can find about $27,000. But we wanted to get there. The, the other issue was, uh, I'm going to lose my train of thought here. It was fire department. Oh, we applied for the, um, a grant, $100,000 grant for fire turnout gear.
Yeah.
We did not receive it.
Okay.
They informed us yesterday.
Is that the federal?
Yeah. Federal government. We applied for it. It cost us like $500 to apply for that grant. We did not receive it. This is two years in a row that we haven't gotten it. They gave us the general Dear John letter, you know, you, you're, they just didn't score high enough, which.
But we did in 2011, right? Senator Jones ran by us.
Yeah. We, we, we had a couple in 2000. We got the pages in 2011. We got, I think it was $20,000 for radios and stuff like that. We've been getting some of them, but the last two years it's been a strikeout. What I did was I sent the message to the guy who does the grant writing for us and said, you know, "What's up?" So he said, basically, what we can do is if you reapply this year, they'll charge us 50 bucks to, to reapply for, again. And, and that's what we're going to do. I guess what happens is that there's two point, there's 11,000 grants, 11,000 applicants for, and they, and the total amount asked for is 2.6 billion dollars. And the amount that they give out is 220 million dollars. But some of these, some of these places, like, I, I don't want to pick on a particular city, but there are some cities around here that apply for this turnout year, and they get almost a million dollar grant. While other places that are small don't get any grant. I just think their process, the way they do things is not, doesn't make too much sense. They should just limit, well, I have to talk to a congressman or whatever. Cause those are the ones that are going to have input. They need to limit that to, you know, hey, 150,000, that's enough. You should be able to buy quite a bit of stuff with 150,000. Not that I have to go out and buy you a fire truck for $400,000 or buy you a million dollars worth of turnout equipment. It's, it's, the system doesn't seem to be working the way it should. But anyway, with that being said, we, we're not getting them. So, and we also have 40 some odd firemen. And half of those firemen don't have turnout gear that fit them. Okay. And, and it has to fit them. You know, I'm not trying, that's why we're trying to do, so it doesn't cost you guys anything. But you got to understand, that's part of firefighting. It's the expensive business. And it's all because it's all mandated stuff. But, you know, like I said, so everybody's aware of it. We are trying to get you that grant. And we'll, we'll resubmit it. And, and hopefully we get it next year. But they ain't no promises. That's the whole thing. But we have to look at, what are we going to do for, you know, you got 20 guys that don't have stuff that fits them. If they get hurt, you know, you got to pay the paper. So that's, that's what happens. So just make you aware of what's going on. But, but my biggest concern was, you got to try to find some of that money so we can take care of that building. We're not saying you got to have to come up with a million dollars to do what you got to do. But there are certain projects that's got to get done. They have to get done. Nothing's been done in 30 years. I mean, you have a lot, a lot of time to save some money. When I budget stuff, that's the way it goes. You know, I take so much, put it away. And then when I got the money, I'll buy it. But, you know, I know things come up. Things just like a house. But you, you gotta, you gotta look at it. It's, it's, it's the key to this village. It's one of the key buildings in this village. And you can't make it go to waste.
Brian, I know prior you were speaking about me doing a feasibility study with the village of Red Hook and the village of Red Hook.
Red Hook.
Town of Red Hook.
Red Hook.
Tivoli and Red Hook.
Yeah.
Yep.
Is part of that feasibility study and shared services, would that bring more revenue to Tivoli? I mean, Tivoli seems to be, I mean, we're financially dying here struggling.
Who?
The village. Tivoli.
Based on?
Just based, based on your yearly budget and your expenses.
I don't think we're, I don't think we're any different than any other municipality.
Well.
I mean, these, I, I, I understand what you're saying. But we, the village of Tivoli, the village of Red Hook, town, Duxes County, for example, we're no different than any other municipality right now.
But by, by doing a feasibility study, if we were to join forces with the village of Red Hook, for instance, I know you're only doing the study now, but how would that help us? How would that?
Well, the key component to the study is to identify avenues. And this study is focusing primarily on highway services. That would be transportation, you know, the snow plow, snow removal.
To do a shared service on that line.
Right. To do shared services. Now, one of the topics of conversation, as I said before, that we're taking into consideration is the fact that a DPW such as Tivoli has, it's a completely different structure departmentally than a town highway department. We serve different functions. Even the idea behind, you know, we're more of a, the, the village has more of an urban feel, say, than a town road. So even the premise behind what a road is, is completely different when you look at it from a town perspective to a village perspective. So we're taking into consideration those things which may affect it peripherally. However, this particular study is focused on highway services. And there are basically two different things that we're looking to achieve. And that is increased efficiency, but also cost savings by shared services. So even if there is not a significant cost savings, but there is an increase in efficiency and an increase in the quality of services that are offered to our residents, that's still a win.
Exactly. So ultimately a, a cost saving process.
It's not exclusively, right.
Right.
So, um, I don't know if that answers your question. It wouldn't necessarily bring additional revenue to Tivoli?
No, no. I wasn't thinking in, in actual physical dollars.
Right. But may it free up some of the money that we have in our budget that is currently designated for highway services?
Yes.
Yes. Potentially. Will it be significant? I don't know. You know?
But at this point, it's just the highway piece that you love to do.
Just the highway at this point.
Do these engineers know how much it costs per mile to clean up a highway during a snowstorm and stuff?
See, now this is exactly the heart of the conversation that we had this morning, Tom. And that was, how do you break down, even in a department such as ours, how much of our DPW staff's time is spent on water and sewer versus highway maintenance? Do you find, you have to factor in the cost of the equipment? You have to factor in the cost of all of the associated things that you need to get the job done. And then you have to have the rubric to figure it out. One of the key components there is the data collection, daily activity logs. Do we have all that? No. Is it even a fair expectation that your guys who are out doing all the work then come back and be able to handle all of the administrative tracking of that? Sometimes it's just not feasible. One of the things that the consultant shared with us this morning is that while we have challenges with that data capture, that data collection, we are not alone. It's all three municipalities that face some challenges there. And then he said, much of, pretty much the majority of municipalities in the state of New York share that same challenge. So, um, there are differing routes that we can take to try to make accurate assessments of what those cost. And that's what the study will primarily be based on. And then that will identify avenues where different practices, whether it's standardized trainings or, you know, sharing equipment or consolidating certain services or centralizing them may prove beneficial to all three of the municipalities. And there may be pieces in there where the two villages, you know, want to do this, but the, the town does not, or vice versa, depending on the function that you're trying to serve in any given circumstance.
Jeanne, am I correct? We already do some shared services?
We do.
We buy salt together. We buy sand together.
We do. You know, Sue.
I use all fuel together.
Those are recognized. And I think the piece that's missing as far as the shared services goes is a formal IMA. That's really it.
Intramunicipal agreement.
I'm sorry. Intramunicipal agreement. Right. As it stands right now, there are some casual agreements. You know, when we were doing a repair to a water main break and our backhoe didn't work, you know, you've got the town or the village stepping up and loaning us equipment. But then there are some other concerns that arise. You know, what happened if their equipment broke while we were using it?
Right.
You know? So this, this study and the solutions that we may shake out of the process are designed to offer the protection, but also ultimately expand the quality or the range of services that are offered. And if there's a cost saving component in there, of course, that's bonus, right?
Talk about cost savings. Example, we are doing road repair on Broadway. We're doing road repair. We also had to hire flaggers to come in to help us while we're doing it. Central working with the town and the village of Red Hook, maybe. They would be able to come up. They could be digging, repairing the road. Our guys could be flagging. So we don't have to go out and hire flaggers to do it. So yes, I think there would be a cost savings on that. We may not have to purchase certain equipment anymore because we can borrow the town of Red Hook. And you're a town of Red Hook resident. And so, town of Red Hook may not have to buy the equipment because the village, Tivoli has it, Red Hook has it. So.
And that's, I mean, that's kind of where I was coming from.
Yeah.
Yes.
If we share some of these services, the budget may stay the same. But now you're able to diversify it into other sectors.
Right.
So it kind of frees it up to just be used in, in different ways. You know, like a household budget. So.
And we don't, you know, there's been concerns because these articles have been in the paper about transferring to the water authority study and consolidating the highway garage services. Talk about layoffs. I don't foresee any layoffs. If we were to do both programs, and obviously the studies would show that, that when we had the presentation here with the water authority, one of the things that was discussed is that, because we have our superintendent of public works who handles our water sewer system. He very well, who's been here forever and a day and knows every drop of water and where it goes, he could very well be hired as the employee of the water authority and the, and the operator. So we would look towards that. Same thing with regards to the shared services. We don't foresee, even in the discussions that we've had thus far, we don't foresee anyone being laid off. What we would do probably is maybe move somebody down to the town of Red Hook to assist them.
Right.
Or the village. And they would do, do the same with us. So we don't see any layoffs or any loss of employment with any of these programs.
Sharing of employees, you know, floater employees, if you will, where, you know, a portion of their time may be applied in a different municipality, but not.
Even if you did shared services, for instance, within the two villages of medical benefits, medical coverages, could you, I mean, I don't know, maybe you do it now.
That's something.
Where you could actually, you know, now you have volume. So now you can go to the insurance companies and discuss better rates.
That's something that the, um, the Duxes County Mayor's Superbad Association has been looking at and continues to look at right now with regards to going in and doing some sort of, getting group rate.
And correct me if I'm wrong, you have been appointed to that insurance.
I've been appointed on, on the state level, on the workers' comp alliance. I've been appointed on that level. And I also just stepped down as the vice chairman of the Mayor's Superbad Association. And that's something that we've been looking at, is trying to come up with some sort of group rate which would lower.
Right.
The cost for everybody. So.
Right.
Yeah. Yeah. So hopefully I answered, we answered, we answered your questions. You don't come enough. So I'm glad we got a chance to chat.
Well, we're going to be back because we want to find out where the disaster plan is going.
Yeah. That's something that we're looking at very seriously. We want to have a plan. There's nothing further. At this point, I entertain a motion to adjourn the meeting. Motion's been made by trustee Israidi and a giggle by trustee Schneider. I'll take it. All in favor?
Aye.
Pose. You stand adjourned. Thank you.